Under order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America, to see you rebapt, for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for infocation, Councilman Higgs.
Heavenly Father, we come before you asking, Lord, that you give us guidance and direction, Lord. We know that you're able to sustain us and keep us from all hurt, harm, endanger, Lord. We ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name. We give you praise, glory, and honor to the only wise God. Thank you, Lord, for another day. Thank you for grace and mercy. Thank you for peace and understanding. You're so wonderful, Lord. I just praise your holy name. Thank you, Lord. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Can we have a moment of silence in honor of Amanda Repay, who is Commissioner Repay's wife, who passed away, who will be funeralized on Wednesday. The wait is tomorrow at Kish Funeral Home, and the funeral is at St. John Bosco on Wednesday. Amanda will truly be missed, and it's a very emotional and hard week for me. Thank you.
Roll call.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Galwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warpo.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Markovich.
Here.
Nine members present, zero absent. Approval of claims, Councilman Warpo.
Need a minute.
I'm sorry, reading in a minute, Councilman Spatelli.
Accept a minute for January twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, be placed on file.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson. Minutes be placed on file. Any discussion? Discussion, discussion. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Approval of claims, Councilman Warpo.
I make a motion. We accept register of claims, beginning with claims dated two four nineteen and ending with claims dated two six nineteen. Claim number six thirty-five through seven ninety-two. It comes to the amount of two million, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warpo, second by Councilman Higgs for approval of claims. Is there any additions or corrections? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes.
Claims approved, nine in favor, zero absent. Public hearings, there are none. Communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
On Thursday, there will be a Black History Program at the Swores Complex on Indianapolis Boulevard honoring African-American registered nurses, a field of excellence. It starts at ten a.m., and I hope to see you there. And it also says, Thomas M. McDermott, Mayor of the City of Hammond, Awana Miller, Community Development Director, and Black History Coalition Committee.
Any other communications?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I have a letter here to submit to the council for approval to pass on to the mayor, HDM, and the sanitary district pertaining to the events around and about Whiting Federal Whiting Metals and also that neighborhood. So I'd like to read it to get it entered into the minutes today.
Go ahead.
Thank you. "In light of recent events and news articles and local and Chicago papers reporting elevated lead and cadmium levels near Whiting Metals, I wanted to provide some history as well as updated information about this important environmental issue. In spring twenty seventeen, Whiting Metals asked the state to renew a ten-year air permit. During the public comment period, I drafted and read to the Hammond Common Council a letter to IDEM requesting a public hearing prior to granting the permit. The letter was approved by the council and sent to IDEM. In December twenty seventeen, IDEM denied the request for a public hearing and granted the renewal. Hammond's administration, council, HDM, and residents were shocked and angered by IDEM's denial. On May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, I and other council persons attended the EPA's public meeting at the Whiting YMCA focusing on high lead levels found on residential properties downwind of the former Federated Metals operation. Concerns were raised about Whiting Metals discharging lead into the air and its impact on human health. Concerns were also raised about the fact that EPA was going to clean certain residential properties, and those properties could be recontaminated by ongoing lead air emissions from Whiting Metals. Hammond's Department of Environmental Management immediately contacted the Indiana Department of Environmental Management and requested air monitors be installed close to and downwind of the Whiting Metals plant. IDEM agreed, but needed a suitable and safe location. The Hammond Sanitary District offered the use of its pump station located at the Lakeview Alley and Indianapolis Boulevard. The first lead twenty-four-hour air quality sample was reported on August third, two thousand eighteen, and sampling continues to this day. So it took about nine weeks from the May twenty-second meeting for the air sampling to start. I want to recognize the initiative taken by HDM, the cooperation of IDEM, and support provided by the Hammond Sanitary District. When HDM learned that the US EPA had a trailer that contained an hourly air quality sample monitor, it suggested that this monitor be shipped here and placed at the same location as the IDEM monitor, with the approval of the Hammond Sanitary District. Because of the elevated lead air readings found in the IDEM samples, the US EPA hourly monitor was brought to Hammond and began providing results on October fifteen, two thousand eighteen, ten weeks after IDEM began air sampling. It is important to note that the air sampling taking place for lead and now cadmium occurred because Hammond's Environmental Department listened to concerns and pursued the request for actions and answers. Also, the Hammond Sanitary District stepped up and offered a location to house the monitors. The city did not stick its head in the sand. It clearly demonstrates that Hammond responds to its citizens to protect their health and property. The fact that there are elevated lead and cadmium readings in the air near the Whiting Metals plant is troubling and needs further intense investigation. Fortunately, our mayor has allocated resources, staff, and equipment to help define and address these health and environmental concerns. I will continue to monitor and report on this important issue as information is made available. And I request that once the clerk has transcribed these comments, a copy be sent to Mayor McDermott, the Hammond Environmental Department, and the Hammond Sanitary District. Thank you.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Just for the record, I just wanted to state that I attended the Park Board meeting in regards to addressing some of the concerns at Harrison Park, and luckily and thankfully, I see some gentlemen were actually in the park today cleaning up the trees in the park where there's a huge problem with dead trees. So I want to thank the Park Board for their acting on my request as quickly as possible. Certainly, we have funds available if they need additional funding in regards to addressing the concerns at Harrison Park. It's one of the parks that I've been trying to get some work done on, and from my understanding, until the other parks are completed, we can't move forward on that. So certainly, we want to address the concerns at Harrison Park as well.
Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Committee reports.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Council as a whole will bring out nineteen dash thirty-five.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, as I do at every council meeting, I would like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Wednesday, February thirteenth, at two p.m., Community Watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza. Tuesday, February nineteenth, East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at the Ophelia Steen Center at six thirty p.m. On Thursday, February twenty-first, the Hessville Crime Watch will meet at the Jean Shepherd Center, beginning at seven p.m. Lafayette Neighborhood Watch will meet Wednesday, February twentieth, at Lafayette School at six thirty p.m. The South Hammond Crime Watch will meet Thursday, February twenty-first, seven p.m., and that is at the Hammond Housing Authority Building. The Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet at Calumet College on Thursday, February fourteenth, at six thirty p.m. This is an excellent opportunity, as I say every week, for our residents to find out what is going on in your neighborhood by attending a community watch or crime watch meeting. We have a very informative network of crime watch and community watch meetings throughout our city that are very informative and very helpful in helping our residents resolve some issues in their neighborhood. Because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Correction, please. That isn't nineteen dash thirty-five. That should be eighteen dash thirty-five. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports?
Thought you were on communications.
I'm sorry.
No.
No, we're on committee reports. Any other committee reports? Ordinances for third and final passage. City Clerk Golick.
Ordinance eighteen dash thirty-five. The petitioners are the Hammond Plant Commission and the Hammond Redevelopment Commission. This council sponsor is Councilman Galwinski. An ordinance of the common council authorizing the City of Hammond, Indiana to issue its taxable economic development tax increment revenue bonds, the Ex-Hammond OPCO LLC project, and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move for final passage of eighteen dash thirty-five.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Since this ordinance was created, a couple of changes have occurred. One is the name change of the business, and the other is some technicalities pertaining to the bond. So I would like to amend in eighteen dash thirty-five A in its entirety to replace eighteen dash thirty-five. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kowinski. Who seconded that?
I did.
Councilman Higgs. That eighteen dash thirty-five be replaced with eighteen dash thirty-five A. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes. Eighteen dash thirty-five, as amended, passes nine in favor, zero absent.
Oh, is that the amendment?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move for final passage of eighteen dash thirty-five A.
Second.
Motion is...
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, motion passes nine in favor, zero absent. Are there any other ordinances for third and final passage?
Councilman Markovich, that completes the ordinances and final passage.
Thank you. Ordinance for third and final passage is completed. Introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance nineteen dash zero-three, sponsored by Councilman Higgs. An ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hammond, section thirty point zero zero five, B one, to insert a new paragraph J to authorize up to five thousand dollars per year to be used for travel expenses for each district councilman.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I motion to table.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, or second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Spatelli, just the table. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
President Markovich, that concludes introduction of ordinances.
Item ten, resolutions.
Item A, Resolution nineteen R dash zero-four, sponsored by the Mayor's Office of Economic Development and Councilman Dan Spatelli. A resolution of the City Council approving the application of EZ deductions to real or personal property of participating businesses located within the Hammond Enterprise Zone that are also located within designated allocation areas as it applies to the January one, two thousand eighteen, assessment date for taxes payable in two thousand nineteen.
Councilman Spatelli.
President, move for final passage of nineteen R dash oh-four.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Warpo for final passage and adoption of nineteen dash R, nineteen R dash oh-four. Any discussion?
President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Approving the Enterprise Zone deductions and the allocation areas. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, final passage and adoption of Resolution nineteen R dash oh-four. City Clerk.
Item.
Item B.
Item B, Resolution nineteen R dash zero-five, sponsored by Councilman Rakels. A resolution recognizing and honoring the Hammond Fire Department and its service to the community.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakels.
Move we pass nineteen R oh-five.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Rakels, second by Councilman Warpo.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakels.
I'd like the opportunity to read the entire resolution into the record. Whereas January twenty-ninth to thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, saw Calumet Region temperatures drop to a new record low levels, and most of the Midwest was impacted and immobilized by a life-threatening polar vortex, causing school and business closures. And whereas on Wednesday, January thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, temperatures in Hammond reached minus twenty degrees Fahrenheit, with wind chills reaching minus fifty degrees. And whereas Hammond EMA, code enforcement, street department, sewer department, water department, and police department all worked in dangerous and extreme conditions in the interest of public safety. And whereas on January thirtieth, at the twenty-seven hundred block of one sixty Third Place, the Hammond firefighters battled a house fire for nearly twelve hours in unmanageable conditions. And whereas the common council of the City of Hammond wishes to recognize the outstanding effort, dedication, and teamwork shown by the Hammond Fire Department, most notably Assistant Chief Carl Repay, Assistant Chief Steve Brzezinski, Assistant Chief Jeff Coches, Assistant Chief Steve Shirk, Italian Chief Ed LoMelli, Italian Chief Bernie Grizziola, Italian Chief J T Donahue, Captain Jim Frund, Private David Hoover, Private Matt Oldenburg, Captain Bob Beliga, Private Josh Dildon, Private Sam Harris, EMT P two, Ed Wagner, Private Eric Mays, Captain Angel Solis, Engineer Mike Hall, Private Joe Baker, Private Juan Gonzalez, Private Anthony Janega, probationary Eric Noto, probationary Garrick Vost, EMT P, Anthony Smith, Captain Ron Blythe, Engineer Russ Dewis, Private Craig Gleason, Captain Steve Zeli, Engineer Mark Vicari, Private Alex Zelinski, Private Casey McCluskey, Captain Kevin Hutz, Private Dan Diambala, Private Ryan Anguiano, Private Scott Hemmerich, Captain Sean Lambert, Engineer Brian Karts, Private Tim O'Neill, Engineer Kevin Collard, EMT one, Darnell Walker, Inspector Rich Wheeler. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Hammond. The common council, behalf of the citizens of the City of Hammond, extend to the Hammond Fire Department, as well as other city employees involved in assisting in fighting the fire, congratulations and praise for representing the hard-working professional fire department of our great city. Resolved this eleventh day of February two thousand nineteen.
Mayor McDermott.
Yeah, thanks. Hold on two seconds. Thank you, Councilman Rakels, Council President Markovich. I want to say thanks to the men and women of the Hammond Fire Department, the police department, the many firefighters that were fighting that fire, the dangerous cold conditions, the police officers that were out there, streets, water, sanitary district, all the workers that were out there for twelve hours fighting that blaze. You know, a lot of us talk about firemen and, you know, how dangerous it is, and then sometimes we get into, you know, costs over, you know, how much it costs to have the fire department. But I tell you what, on that day when we saw Ed Wagner out there, relatively new Hammond firefighter, you know, they took a picture of him. We all saw the picture. That picture went viral. I saw that picture on ABC World News Tonight. It was shared thousands and thousands and thousands of times, viewed possibly millions of times. We had hoped the chiefs, you know, Chief Smith and Chief Margrave hoped to have all the firefighters here that participated, but the fire chief made the decision not to do that because he didn't want to put the city in a precarious position, having all the firefighters that worked so hard on this. So we promised that if you guys pass this resolution, which I imagine it will be passed, that we're going to make copies and send it to all the men and women that worked so hard on that dangerous fire. And I'd like to take note, I think Mrs. Wagner was expecting to see her husband here, who's on duty today, so I wanted to take a second to recognize Heidi Wagner. Ed was the fireman that was taken in the famous picture, and Heidi brought along her three children with her. So if you don't mind, we could focus our applause on her, and then she could transfer it off to her husband. But anyway, I'm going to, Mr. President, if you don't mind, could the chief come up here and say a couple words also? Thank you.
First, Scott, thank you, or Councilman Warpo. Rakels, thank you for this resolution. We appreciate it. You've been in those situations a few times in the past, I'm sure, but that was the coldest day in twenty-seven years that I know of. You know, Captain Golick, or, I'm sorry, Clerk Golick, and Scott, you guys were probably at Myers Warehouse back in nineteen ninety-one. That was pretty cold for you guys, I'm sure. Unfortunately, you know, the same thing happened that day that we lost a life. We couldn't get to the, you know, the conditions were terrible. Like the mayor said, some of the departments, the water department, we had frozen hydrant. The water department came out and tried to thaw the hydrant out. They did for us, but we still found another one. They had another frozen hydrant. One of the rigs froze up, couldn't get the aerial set up. Anything could have went wrong that day, went wrong. So, you know, on the way to work that morning, we were talking. I had to pick up one of the inspectors because his car wouldn't start, so I picked him up at his house, and we were talking, and said, man, hopefully we don't get nothing. And it was like an hour later. So I just want to thank you guys for recognizing us, Mrs. Wagner for showing up. The reason I didn't send the rigs, I was going to have them come about an hour ago when it started to sleet and rain. We're going to be on enough accidents today if it gets that bad, and I don't want to be part of one. So I figure we just better leave them in quarters as much as we can until we have to go out. But on another note, Councilman Rakels and Warpo, thanks for bringing out the coffee. I know it's not your district, but we really appreciate it. It was, it got cold pretty quick. We were standing outside, but thank you very much.
Mr. President, the good thing about having Go Hammond TV is for times like this, and I know the Hammond firemen and, you know, that are watching right now would rather be here to get your kudos, but I do know that we have a large audience right now watching, and I'm sure many of them are watching on Go Hammond TV, so I just wanted to let them know, well, we really appreciate what they did, and they made our city look great in very challenging conditions. So congratulations to the men and women of the Hammond Fire Department, and thank you very much, Councilman Rakels, for this kind gesture. Thank you.
Clerk Golick, item C.
We're going to vote on it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, Resolution nineteen R oh-five passes nine in favor, zero absent.
Item C, Resolution nineteen R dash zero-six, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines. A resolution reappointing Bonnie Henry to serve as a member of the Hammond Community Corporation Incorporated.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of nineteen R oh-six.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Kowinski. For final passage of nineteen R dash oh-six, any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I had a question. I was just trying to figure out exactly what are their responsibilities with the Hammond Community Corporation Incorporated.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, they give out grants for organizations who have applied. The maximum amount of the grant is one thousand dollars. They meet once a year, and that's it.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes. Resolution nineteen R dash oh-six passes nine in favor, zero absent.
Item D, Resolution nineteen R dash zero-seven, sponsored by Councilman Galwinski. A resolution to appoint Diane Kaminsky to the Hammond Port Authority.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move for passage of nineteen R dash oh-seven.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spatelli. For final passage of nineteen dash R oh-seven, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I'd like to enter nineteen R dash oh-seven A in its entirety to replace nineteen R dash oh-seven, because some of the dates had to be changed to make them accurate. Thank you.
Motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Higgs for nineteen dash R dash zero-seven A to replace nineteen R dash zero-seven. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Diane has served on the Port Authority for a number of years, and I attend many of the construction meetings as well as the port meetings, and I can tell you that she is a watchdog for the Port Authority and the Marina dollars, and will ask penetrating questions and sometimes keep the board members there a little longer than they would like, but she always does her homework, and she's looking out for the city. And thank you for that, Diane.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes. Motion passes nine in favor, zero absent.
Mr. Chairman.
Nineteen...
Do we have to go through that again?
Nineteen R dash zero-seven, as amended.
Roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Markovich.
Yes. Motion passes nine in favor, zero absent.
President Markovich second completes the reading of the resolutions.
Item eleven, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Since the mayor's here, I just want to re, um, reemphasize the fact that the residents on State Line and the sixty-third hundred block of, uh, Forest is, were complaining about the snow being pushed on their garages, and I sent the correspondence to Gary, as well as the mayor's office in regards to that. I keep getting phone calls, and certainly we don't want to have them to the point where they can't get out their garages, so... The mayor said he would look into it and try to resolve the issue, so since he's here, and I'm sure, uh, Mr. Gonzalez is looking. Uh, hopefully, we can get that to the point where we're not dealing with the point of them having to, uh, be snowed in and can't get out of their garages.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpo.
Uh, Mayor, if you don't mind, uh, could you give us an update on what I've been reading in the paper about the gaming boat? And is it a threat to Hammond from what I've been reading about this, um, land-based casino coming to the expressway?
Yeah, um, thank you, Councilman Warpo. Um, Mr. President, I, uh, I was in Indianapolis two days last week, testifying on one day for the data center, which is going very well, by the way. State's partnership with City Hammond and, you know, data center management's going really well. That project seems like it's scooting through, and on the other hand, I was in the Senate testifying, trying to protect, protect the status quo with, you know, regards to casino gaming. Gary has a proposal in the Senate that is moving pretty quickly, that would allow them to build a land-based facility somewhere in Lake County, obviously in Gary, um, along eighty-nine-four. So, that gives you very, I mean, there's very few spots they could put it along eighty-nine-four. I've heard a couple of different locations, but, um, right now, that proposal is, got momentum. It's hard to stop, and the Senate's forty to ten, Republicans and Democrats, actually forty-one to nine, Republicans and Democrats. And, uh, so, it's hard to stop these types of bills. The, a second Gary casino license would go to Terre Haute under that proposal. That doesn't really threaten Hammond's gaming money, uh, or East Chicago's gaming money, for that matter, but moving locations like Gary wants to do is against the current Indiana code, so they'd have to change Indiana code. And what it does is it changes traffic patterns, it changes the way people gamble, which is a threat to the city of Hammond, and it's more of a dire threat to the city of East Chicago and to Maristar, uh, owned by Penn Gaming. So, uh, it's a very real situation. I testified, Bear Copan testified on behalf of East Chicago. Hammond FOP and Hammond Fire was there, which is great that they're involved. Um, it's a real situation. We need to all be paying attention to what's going on. I personally think it's unfair what's going on, but we have a good lobbying team, and people are sort of listening to us about the unfairness of the whole thing. And they agreed to put language in the Senate version that, it's called the Hold Harmless Clause, which says that Hammond, if we lose money because of the casino expansion in Gary, let's say our casino revenue went from thirty-two a year down to thirty a year, once Gary opens our riverboat, under that scenario, Gary would owe us two million dollars, and they would continue forward forever. Basically, all the revenue loss that the city of Hammond experiences because that boat opening, we would be made whole. Um, what that doesn't protect is Horseshoe Casino itself. They'll probably see a reduction in gaming ten, fifteen percent. If that's the case, are they gonna lay off ten to fifteen percent of their staff? Estimates for Maristar in East Chicago is they could lose up to fifty percent of their gaming revenue. And if they lose fifty percent of their gaming revenue, they're probably gonna have no recourse other than to lay off close to fifty percent of their staff. So, even though the city of Hammond is being held harmless, and even though the city of East Chicago is being held harmless, if Gary's allowed to move, um, the businesses themselves will not be held harmless, and the only recourse they have is to lay off. So, so it's, I'm happy that the current Senate version is protecting us. I'm not thrilled with the whole thing, but it's moving. Councilman Warpo, and, you know, once it gets out of the Senate, if it gets out of the Senate, we're gonna have to double down and fight in the House and try to stop it there, and, and at the very worst, make sure that that language is in there that protects the city of Hammond, so... I don't know if anybody has any questions on this.
Just, I hear a lot that we supposedly get thirty-five million in gaming, and it's just not true after you take out pretty RDA and all that other stuff. But it's all contingent on gaming numbers, correct?
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's dependent on the game. In like, in twenty-eighteen, we had a really good gaming year, but, yeah, it's all contingent on those numbers.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Mayor, how much less revenue are we receiving this year versus last year?
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Uh, do you mind, I'll answer it, and then I, we started off on a bad note in January. I track these numbers pretty closely. We were, January is a down year, a down, a down month. So, the thing, the reason that's important is if we peg to twenty-nineteen, which is what they're talking about, we're having a bad year already, and there's a lot of people that say this is gonna be a bad year. I was just reading the Wall Street Journal today that said twenty-nineteen's gonna be one of the worst casino gaming years in recent memory, and that's unfortunately for us, that's the number we're gonna peg to, which is a bad casino year. If we could peg to twenty-eighteen, we'd be better off, but they're not really listening. And in my opinion, this bill is moving. I've been fighting this fight for fifteen years, and we usually come away unscathed. It seems to me this is a real deal. I have a feeling I'm gonna be spending a lot of time in Indianapolis this year. So, Councilman, I didn't mean to cut you off, so that's the answer to your first question.
I guess I'm just trying to get a estimated amount of revenue that we will possibly lose.
Nope. You know, we got a lot of big hits coming. We're gonna get four or five million dollar hit next year in gaming because of the tax caps. This Gary facility, if it's approved in twenty-nineteen, probably won't be operating until twenty-two at the latest, uh, at the earliest, twenty-three most likely. It'd be realistic, right? They have to find a location, they have to acquire the land, they have to get all their, you know, plans approved by the state, and then they gotta build it. And we built ours. It took a year to build it, so this isn't anything that's gonna hit us next year. It's gonna be towards the end of this next term. But it could be, I'm hearing numbers of ten to twenty percent for Hammond, Councilman, so do the math. That could be five million dollars. Another five million dollar hit, so...
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I wanted to, uh, also thank, um, Mark Heinz for, um, meeting with me in regards to, again, uh, addressing, uh, the pavilion and, um, wanted to reemphasize to my constituents that live in the Harrison Park area where Jake lives, uh, we're trying to get that pavilion done, and, uh, and certainly I've been trying to get that done for a number of years, so hopefully we can get that completed shortly. You can put that in your article.
Mr.
Any other, uh, new and?
Mr. President.
Councilman, uh?
I don't usually do this, but, uh, I wanna thank the, uh, Code Enforcement Department. Um, Friday, I saw a post on Facebook talking about the Walmart Cabela's property and the garbage on the property. And about the time I saw the post, my Code Enforcement guy, Jason Hawkins, said, "Don't worry, Councilman, we're on it." I didn't have to send a letter or hit nine-one-one or three-one-one, whatever it was. He saw it, and I went to Walmart the next day, and that property was, had fifteen guys out there cleaning it. And I just want to give a shout out to Kelly Kearney and the entire inspections Department, along with Jason, for getting right on top of that issue without letters or anything having to be sent. He saw it, he did it. It's done, it's cleaned. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I wanna thank the graffiti removal, uh, department for removing the graffiti off the property on nine-oh-eight Conky, and there's another property right next to it. I guess they hadn't gotten to the, uh, owners of the property. They can't go on the property and remove the graffiti until they, uh, contact the owners. But I want to thank them for getting out there and removing the graffiti off the property. I don't work just at election time, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. I'm so excited about this election.
A couple notices, uh, February twenty-first at five-thirty, at sixty-five oh-five Columbia Avenue. The Water Department will have a meeting about the I U R C. And they'll also have another meeting at ten AM on March sixth at the Sports Complex at sixty-six thirty Indianapolis Boulevard. It's about the I U R C. You got it, everybody received a letter in their water bill explaining what's going on to that effect. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I would like to, uh, also thank the graffiti department. Uh, a few weeks ago, uh, there was graffiti on Ridge Street, which runs behind White Castle there, on a sign, on a barricade to prevent people from running into a fire hydrant, and on a building that faces that little street. And I used a three-one-one app, and they were there. It was done, uh, by the end of the day, so, thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Uh, I was contacted by a couple of residents within my district about something about the KKK or something over on Garfield. To my knowledge, no one's contacted me, uh, the homeowner's not contacted me, and so I don't get actively involved into situations until I'm clear as to actually what took place, so just so the residents know that those that are watching. Feel free to contact Councilman Higgs if you want my input.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression of Barry Tyler Jr., sixty-three sixteen Forest Avenue. Topic is nineteen dash zero-three. That has been tabled, so it's not up for discussion.
I couldn't even share a thought on it.
It's not even on the agenda anymore. It was tabled.
Okay.
Any other new, uh, Count, uh, George Steyer.
George Steyer, Robertsdale. Um, with respect to the Water Department and its, the transfer of authorization or a transfer of jurisdiction or out of jurisdiction from the I U R C, I performed a cursory, uh, examination of the statutes that were, that were cited, and what struck me was, I didn't really see any provision, and I didn't expect it necessarily, but I'm, what I'm requesting this council, uh, some of the language was disturbing insofar as its, its breadth, its, the scope of the costs that were permitted, uh, to be factored in, the factors that were to go into the costs of, uh, service or, and, uh, uh, the incidental costs especially, or costs incidental to operation and maintenance, I think is the way they phrase it. And I am hoping, and, and it may be the case, it may not be the case, that this council, uh, hasn't been much discussion about it, that, uh, some sort of mechanism or provision be, uh, included that allows citizens to look at the factors or the breakdown, the outline, of the cost of service, so that we know, uh, given, I don't want a blank check, and that's what I fear, that this is gonna be a blank check for any time that we need some money, well, we'll just, you know, trot it out there. We don't have to go to the I R S C because they're not writing hurt on this anymore. And, you know, it becomes almost, uh, you know, I'm, I'm being a tad cynical admittedly, but it becomes almost like an ATM. And, uh, and this thing's gonna go on now. This is, this is in perpetuity. This is not just, you know, a provisional thing. And so I'd like to see some, uh, access for the citizen to look the books over, because although there are provisions for somebody to contest and contend and petition and all that stuff, the burden is very high, and it seems very costly to contest a, a, a change in rates or a, or anything like that, and absent, uh, ready access, that means absent, without having to go through a FOIA request and all that other good stuff that's usually used to block citizens from learning what's going on. Uh, I, I'd like to see some, some ready access to this information, so that if there is a basis to contest, uh, I, I hearken back to the, uh, well, it's about four years old now, but the, the sanitation district lawsuit, and much of the controversy centered around the cost of service and, and, and in determining proportionate, uh, use of the various, uh, services, uh, provided by the sanitation districts. And, uh, and, 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 and so, in figuring this out, that was only, you know, you know, that stuff is exchanged. Of course, we're talking about municipalities, and maybe the, uh, there's a little more, I guess I'm gonna use the word regard accorded each municipality one-to-one, whereas citizens, as usual, are treated like dogs. So, I'd like to see some ready access to this information so that we know what's happening at, without having to go through a FOIA request. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mayor.
I'm really uncomfortable with something that just happened, okay? I think you violated the First Amendment, all right? I don't think you could tell anybody what they can and can't talk about, Councilman Markovich. And I'm, I think you run a good meeting. I think that was over the line what just happened, and I think it violated the First Amendment. I think you should let Barry Tyler speak, absolutely, and I think we need to rectify it, because I think you should defer to your attorney right now and make sure that I'm right, but I don't think you have the authority to tell what the public, what they can and can't say. And that just happened right in front of me, and I think Barry could sue us for what just happened. You got a counsel over there. I think you should consult with them before we close this meeting up, because we're gonna get sued. I'd sue Hammond if they did that to me. I would. I'd get a lawyer, and I'd sue the pants off this city over what just happened. And it's happened before. I think you need to talk to your lawyer before we gavel out here. That's not right, what just happened. I think he can come up here and talk about butterflies if he wants to. It's not on the agenda. And I feel strongly about this. We can't tell the public. I've seen meetings run like that. I've never seen a Hammond City Council meeting where you come up to the podium, you say, "You can't say that. Go back and sit down." Councilman Markovich, I think you've been doing a good job as president. That's over the top, man. Before we gavel out, I think we rectify it.
Okay. Attorney Berger?
I don't understand the...
Well, um, the agenda was asking for a topic, and it was nineteen oh-three, which was an ordinance that was tabled, so whether they still talk about it or not, if it's not on the agenda anymore.
I guess you can let him talk about it.
Okay, so, thank you, Mayor.
President.
Councilman Higgs.
I make a motion that we go back to new and unfinished business, I assume.
Why don't you let him talk on the public expression?
The chair would go ahead and allow Mr. Tyler to come and say it on nineteen dash oh-three. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman.
Public expression is now.
Thank you, Mr. President, and rest of the city council. I, uh, Barry Tyler, uh, sixty-three hundred block of Forest Avenue. I just wanted to, when I walked in and saw the agenda, I was shocked that there was a potential ordinance, uh, that you all were going to discuss tonight in terms of allocating more money for, to cover travel expenses for city council people. Uh, in a situation where the mayor has talked about it, you all have talked about how difficult of a budget year this is going to be, and how you're gonna ask departments across the city to make budget cuts. It just seems, uh, a bit irresponsible, in my opinion, to allocate for travel expenses. Uh, that's one point. The second point is, it's not even defined about what those expenses would be. Uh, so are we talking about, like, mileage reimbursement from driving around the district? Or are we talking about traveling from here to, say, Las Vegas for, uh, different types of, of retreats or things like that? So, just wanted some more clarification on that, um, and just wanna really push us as a, as a city to think about where we're spending our money, especially when we're already talking about a tough budget year, and knowing that, uh, a lot of other programs and a lot of other people, citizens within our, our city, need support from various different formats. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you still make a motion for new and unfinished business?
I make a motion that we adjourn from this meeting.
Motion by Councilman Higgs is a second. Second by Councilman Spatelli. All who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.